We'll go ahead and start with the roll call.
Mr. Greenwood.
We'll address him in a second.
Mr. Hodges.
Here.
Mr. Garber.
Here.
Mr. Moran.
Here.
Chairman Spawski.
Here.
Now, Clark, your call roll.
Ms. Frazier. Mr. Lee. Ms. Morrison.
Here.
Ms. Stone.
Here.
Mr. Tuppence.
Here. Okay. Right, Mr. Greenwood has requested to attend this meeting remotely under the policy that we have adopted. We do need to allow that to happen, so I will take a motion from a board member. Motion second, any discussion? Ms. Branch.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Moran. Chairman Spawski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood, do we have you?
Yep, I'm in here, thanks.
All right, you are in and official, so do you need to do one of your members?
I am not sure if Mr. Lee is running late. Ms. Frazier is on the Zoom or call.
Not as of yet.
All right, we'll pick her up, we can address her. Okay. Review and adoption of the meeting agenda, no changes to the agenda that was set out the other day, so I understand that was up on our end. So, discussion. Ms. Branch.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Chairman Spawski.
Aye. We're good, we don't want to drop the agenda. Okay. All right, we'll straighten the work section matter, discussing school capital requests, Mr. Tuppence and I had a conversation by phone yesterday, and I think I'm going to let him pick off the discussion with this. Have a timeline of where we are, where exactly the school board is in the process of the rounds.
Right, thank you Chairman Spawski and fellow board supervisors, thank you for having us this evening. Earlier this summer, we did receive a presentation from ABM regarding the capital needs within the schools, particularly around facilities. And with that, it is my understanding that ABM did come present to you guys as well, the findings from their walkthrough and studies that they completed. Just want to level set expectations that as a school board, we have not voted on pursuing or proceeding with ABM. We have had initial discussions, it is our plan to integrate this into our capital improvement plan that we'll be submitting to the county during the budget processes we do every year. But we wanted to kick off and start having discussions in how does the county want to proceed in addressing the findings within each of the schools? Because it is a large price tag, and we understand that. But there is a demonstrated need to do some facility work, specifically around HVAC and some of the capital items at some of the schools. So, we wanted to have the same thing for that opportunity for us as boards, as we did with the Hamilton Homes under preparation project. Did not happen overnight, it wasn't, let's meet once and go forward, it's going to take time for each of our sides to go through each of the various projects, determine how to proceed forward, what funding may or may not be available, so that we know how to go forward. This is a slightly different project from ABM, from the previous project that we did, because there are really no savings in this particular project. It is all capital expense, with no way to recoup those savings, or recoup the spend on savings. So with that, I just want to open it up for both of our boards to kind of walk through, and our administrations, if they want to lead us through this, Dr. White?
Yes, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Longus, so that she can provide a presentation on the financials and scope of the plan, and to Mr. Tony Stone may assist as well.
All right. To give you a quick update, the ABM presentation, just to summarize it quickly, King William had completed the first phase using interview savings and lease payments, which we've started the lease payment payback as of last year. On phase two of the presentation that's in front of you is to replace all of the Quinton Elementary HVAC and boilers. These units are 32 and 26 years old, and six units at the high school. On phase three of the presentation is to replace 45 rooftop units at Hamilton Homes Middle School. Those are 23-year-old units, and also King William High School gym rooftop units. And then phase four of the presentation focuses on the King William Primary HVAC units, the full roof replacement, building automation, and replacing units at the pond building and the field house at the high school. I did want to make everyone aware, we, King William County Public Schools, applied for a grant through the Virginia Department of Education for the HVAC replacement and improvement grant. We're waiting for final approval on the grant, it's gone through multiple levels, and we believe will be awarded at least $403,080. That grant does require 100% match, so we would be coming to the board of supervisors to pull that money from our school reserve to meet that grant. Currently, as we proposed it, the school would like to move forward with using that HVAC grant and the matching funds with board approvals, obviously, for the 45 HVAC units at Hamilton Homes Middle that were removed phase three from the possible financing in the future. That was something that when Director of Operations, Dr. White, myself sat down, it was a manageable project. We could kind of get that done using the matching, and that kind of pulled that phase out of this long, the multiple phases. We are currently sitting at, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, 50% capacity on some of our units at Hamilton Homes and the atrium and some other areas. So they're not working up to the ability. A lot of the HVAC units in Hamilton Homes were placed part of the renovation, but these are units that were not replaced in that part. So really, capital plans that we've come to you in previous years in the capital plan and kind of talked through, these units, obviously, are very old, so I guess the next steps we ask for you all, or advice from our board, the Board of Supervisors in Davenport, and next steps to replace the units out of Quinton Elementary and Hamilton Homes High School, and to move the two rooftop units from King William High School Phase Three with the current Phase Two, so that we could possibly take care of Phase Two and Three all at one time.
Well, sorry, the 50%, the 50% statement, is that 50% of capacity of the unit, or only 50% of the total unit?
50% of capacity of some of the units.
You don't crank it up and crank it down, or what is the case they do?
Right.
Mr. Stone.
Yeah, we have, we have.
Yes, sir.
We actually have four rooftop units in the gym at Hamilton Homes, actually two only working right now, two are down, so that's actually 50% of the gym there. Our atrium unit is 50%, it's the fourth compressor unit. We have two compressors down in the coals that is also on that unit, so that machine is operating at about 50% too. So it's a handful of units operating at 50%, a lot of it is just the age of the equipment right now, I look at it about 28 years old for the existing.
When did ABM last, I remember it, I don't remember it, a year, what year did they come in?
Two years ago. Was it two years ago, yes.
And, not being too critical, but I understand the late Mr. Drew Martin was an expert on these HVACs. Did he ever report to you all that you think we're getting in this kind of state?
Yeah, well, we kind of, just based on the age. Again, that renovation would have done it, I think, 1998 at Hamilton Homes, so they did those units, a well past expected life, I mean, on a commercial, it's around 15 years. We're at 26, 27 for that.
My question, why you bring them all at one time, really, what I'm getting at, I mean, it's like the whole works is going.
Right, well, I mean, I think our guys have done a good job maintaining that over the years.
We're not hearing about Mr. Mark.
Excellent job, Martin, Tuppence, I mean, all those guys have done an excellent job. Right now, you get to a point where parts are a problem, the expense of the parts getting abandoned is a problem because of the age of the units. And it's not just Hamilton Homes, it's happened at Quinton today. We actually had a compressor boiler at Quinton on the older section there, actually had a small fire that we had put out, but it's just the age of these equipments with the contact sticking and having to restart them. Everything's been, we've been having a lot of issues at all this, so right now.
And Mr. Hodges, I can add just a little more color to that. If you recall back with the economic downturn after the housing crisis, and all that ensued behind that with funding to schools and having to make cuts, one of the areas that the school system and Dr. Jones at the time had recommended is that we started deferring maintenance. And by doing that deferred maintenance to try to keep the budgets balanced and to keep the tax burden as low as possible to county citizens, unfortunately, this is where we're at today, where we've got a lot of deferred maintenance that is now starting to catch up and.
I would just love to know here, even if we don't have the money, I'd like to know that it's down the road, and right now, it's in effect.
Because we've gone from deferred maintenance to replacement.
Right.
Let me ask you something, these units, well, they, similar to the heating of the heat pumps in houses, they've upgraded to like R110 now. For you.
Yeah.
So it's my understanding now that if you replace, you can't mix and match, you can't, you'd have to replace all of them. So when you're saying 50%, those units are 50%, those other two units, for the thing to work correctly, you have to replace all four.
Well, not, well, actually, we're just, the other two units are doing most of the load. We're adjusting the temperature and putting more weight on those heat.
Is this a state grant, because I was going to ask you about that, I did know about it.
The grant?
Yes.
Yes, well, I believe it's a federal grant coming through the CARES funding.
Okay.
And Mrs. Longus, would you remind us again, I just wanted to, so for phase three, we were looking at, for the grant potentially tackling the 45 rooftops?
Yeah, so we've got some additional pricing in, and we're looking at for the entire project of the 45 rooftops at, yeah, okay. 1.3, I think.
So that's the piece that potentially a grant would cover the cost of?
A grant would cause, cover a portion of it, and then we would pull the rest from our school reserve to offset that. There is an opportunity that if some districts did not take advantage of the, or not be able to do the 100% match with school reserve funds, that there would be more money in the pot that would come back out. So we're, we've been through all the approval levels, we're waiting for the last one, but it may be held to see if all the other districts claim their money. Because there could be an opportunity, we could get more to offset that.
And then if we were successful with that grant, then we would kick up the building automation and the two gym rooftop units, and need to combine those two with another phase.
We put building automation in the price of the 45 units.
Okay, great. So we already picked up building automation, it would just be the two rooftop units at the high school. I was thinking the two rooftop units at the high school, since they were already doing some roof units at the high school, pushing that to Phase Two if possible, that will complete all of the high school. The only thing outstanding that would go in a later phase would be the pond building, which is where impact's located, and the athletic fields. Fieldhouse.
So what is the timeframe? Will be, I guess, all four phases, what are we looking at?
I think that's what we're here to discuss, because it's based upon the funding, of course. And so, ABM, when they were looking at phases, they were trying to group together life work. For example, they just mentioned if you were going to move those, you know, the high school rooftops, you may want to move to Phase Two. But the need is there, and Mr. Hodges, you make a great point, tell us everything you need as opposed to just pieces apart. And so what this demonstrates is a complete assessment, a needs assessment. And then I think they, of course, ABM has laid out, here's how you could phase it. But ultimately, the phasing is dependent upon the funding, you know, how it's determined, we determine is the best way to fund it, recognizing the fact that based upon the age, at any point, you could have some failure of equipment that we would have to deal with. And certainly, we know that we have that reserve fund, we don't want to go there, makes a lot more sense to use that reserve fund as a match to capture grant funds. You're going to get more bang for your buck, so. So again, I don't think that we're here tonight to tell you exactly what the timing should look like, or what the phasing should look like. This is a needs assessment that was prepared by ABM, we can go back to them and provide feedback and say, hey, we need to break it up in increments of X dollars per phase, or whatever it may be, and they would come back to us and propose what they think makes the most sense in approaching it from that way.
Is there a list of schools that might have to be shut down?
So we're hoping that if we were to move quickly, we would do most of this work in the summer. We would have to rearrange summer where, summer cleanings and summer schools. But that's something that's doable, as if we have enough time to plan.
If I understood correctly from the ABM presentation, the Quinton's water source system, and the original part of the school is the the system that is in the diet, or the most need of repair or replacement.
Correct.
Is that correct, and what is the estimated cost of that, do we know that, is that broken out?
I don't know if it's broken out anymore.
It's not broken out.
Oh, that's been on our capital plan for years to replace some of those. Yeah, I don't want to do it just for that. Because Phase Two is a total, they estimate it as 4.85, so it would be part of that. Originally, when I came on board and looking at old capital plans, it's been in there for years for $150,000 per hallway. I don't know if that estimate was reasonable or not, but that's kind of what I inherited when I started.
And that may have just been for a unit replacement, that is not for the entire
Yes, sir.
water system, of course, based on how those units operate.
And if I might interject, Mr. Hodges, you asked a question, I did go back, and that's what I was doing. ABM did present to the board back in May 20th, 2019, with a lump at that time of some of the needs. But we only focused on what we did with Phase One that we could take out of the energy savings. But they did provide a comprehensive, and I can forward that if you'd like, it was in May 20th, 2019.
But again, and my whole point was, talking to you, saying it's almost 30 years old, like you said, the life is like 15th.
Yes, sir.
We're way behind the eight box.
Yeah, and that's why we went with the, why we went with the energy savings, because we knew at that time, the money wasn't there to fund it, so we wanted to offset the payment with the energy savings, so that we could tackle that first part, which was the most dire need.
And, not, this is not a big year, if you said six, King William High School, but it says seven over there.
Oh, my heart. Yes, sir.
So, one reason, by all means, I'm curious, but we were eager to have this meeting, is because this timeline that is presented on the final page was presented to us in October, with a, you know, signing paperwork timeline of November, December. And we were, I think, collectively quite alarmed at the idea to expect to approve a 13 and a half million dollar capital request in two months, without, without any further discussion from you guys, so. So, phasing it, we still got pretty big numbers as we go through Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, you know. We're probably outside of the funding capacity, I think about one of our boards, in a single budget season to fund only Phase One, Phase Two, or Phase. Now, obviously, we were alarmed that we better, Davenport here with us tonight, that if we needed to go that route, but I think we would have to, we would obviously not like to be taking on debt. And if you guys also have other capital needs, I'm sure, that will be part of that capital request that you. So, I guess my first question is, you know, we've got all of this from what would appear to be a single source, a quote.
Well, so, a couple things, so if this is on here, and unfortunately, we were not aware in the meat, but it's coming, for you all who would have been here. ABM has done work for us in the past, so it made sense to get a needs assessment from them. They were familiar with our facilities, and they could come and do that. But when they presented to the school board, and also had some next steps, we had discussions with them and talked about the fact that it would have to go out for bid. So they are not the guaranteed vendor, per se, and we shared that with them publicly. These projects would have to go out to bid, and certainly, once we understood how we were going to phase it, whether it's the bridge they're suggesting, or some other, then that's when you would determine how to send it out to bid. Again, they did the first work, they're familiar with their building, made sense to use them for kind of that needs assessment. But in no way are we tied to this particular vendor contractor, although they may come in with the best proposal, you know, who's to say that? But I think the funding, in my mind, determining what is the funding capacity, and then you kind of work backwards from there in regards to how you tackle, you know, what, how much you can fight off with each phase, and how do you approach that. We certainly understand what's the greatest priority, and I think these phases indicate the greatest priority. But, you know, if at the same time, if Phase Two is, you know, X million, and we can only fund X, you know, but, but we have to, so often, we've submitted annual capital improvement plans that we've come before, discussed it, but we've never truly sat down with like a Davenport and said, okay, how I'm going to tackle it over the next five years, 10 years, or whatever it may be. And I think that's where we are now, and what we need to do is not, there's discussions, it's added to a sheet somewhere with a dollar amount, but we're never getting to the point of making sure that we're funding it and we're budgeting for it.
Right. Yeah, because, as we all recall, those of us that are long timers now, the deferred maintenance thing, it's not, we were banking that money.
Right.
So now that this deferred maintenance has come home in the form of a
Critical need.
critical need for total unit replacements. Yeah.
I would give you that, it's beyond maintenance.
Yeah, for sure.
And that's what happened.
We all know that, I mean, it's no different over here, it's not like we've been funding maintenance at an appropriate level on our side now, so that, that. Any other?
Yeah, questions? Well, it's not really questions, you know. I'm in line with Bill, it is such a thing as being proactive. And 30 years of working at Altria, we had it drilled into, now it is pro act, pro act. Small problem can become a large problem, small problem can be a catastrophic failure. I haven't been on board that long, you know, but I have never been one to leave and kick the can down the road.
Well, this is where we are. Right, we had to do what we had to do, you know, we were looking at numbers of Baco this past week. You know, the state with regards to their share of local education expenses, they still lag behind by a good margin what they were funding even before the economic downturn in '08 and '09, those numbers still not caught up to those levels. You know, us as local, you know, funding bodies, and then, and then the school board is the decision maker on where that funding goes, and stretch every dollar that we fit, so. I'm sure we would love to have the revenue of Altria to accomplish.
I mean, you know, it's predictable, but.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I think we all knew as we were making these decisions that they would, they would come up eventually, and so if you notice, we'd still be on boards.
The one, the one thing I do want to reassure you is that our management staff, our staff, our finance, they've known all along, they, you know, they've talked about, we've talked about this board, but again, it was the funding that was the difficult, so it's not that our folks did not understand the condition of the equipment. They understand that very well, because they've been limping along and band-aiding it and keeping it going. But at some point, you cannot get those parts, and then, you know, so you're pushed to the point where you have to.
I commend them for that, because 28-year-old piece of machinery, and they're still running some of them. They've done one heck of a job.
But when you do this all at one time, probably none of us will be running.
But it'll come to you again at the same time.
And that's from the perspective that, you know, the school is built, you know, we've got four schools total, and so, you know, that's it's not equal, but it's 25% of your capital, you know, and they were built in this, in one percent they were here, so. But we understand that, having a replacement plan and, you know, hopefully can all work.
At what point would we know that some of the funding was not used and come off with a match?
So on the one grant, we, we were hoping that the original quote would come in around a million, it came in at 1.4. So we're pulling more from our school reserve than I was really comfortable with at the time. So that, pulling that out of this scenario, we should have an idea by January on that piece. But that's not the pressing need, I don't feel like, I feel like the Quinton units are the pressing need. These are pressing, but, I guess, yeah, the next in line.
Quinton's is probably the most critical right now for the age, and the things we had it right now. Hamilton Homes is a close second. Cool Springs, you probably can buy a couple of years after, because it was about 18 years old.
The baby compared to 28.
Right. They're doing well, I mean, when we went through the assessment, we gave every piece of Quinton a grade, I mean, A, B, C, to F. Right now, we're looking at Cool Springs at a B right now, even at 18 years old, so, a B versus a A, so.
Are you that optimistic?
Well, I mean, yeah.
With his inventory, you have to be.
I can see, but we, did you not say we don't have an actual figure on that?
On Cool Springs?
Yeah.
And we do have a figure on the springs you replace all the top there.
It's Phase Four, and they estimated Cool Springs and the little work at the high school to be 5.5 million.
That includes the roof as well.
But that also includes the roof that we think would be about 800,000.
Right.
A quick estimate, which is.
How old was that roof?
Right, right, well, 20 years old, right at that, yeah.
And what is the lifespan?
20 to 25, or we haven't stayed on that roof right now, we've got a lot of blistering. Again, it's a gold asphalt type roof, not a PTO roof. We have a lot of blistering, a lot of leaks right now that, that's over. And maybe just done for, you know, keep its price, maybe done a bit processing construction, maybe, but that's not the construction, nothing you see right now. Going to new construction.
But if we're going to put units on top of the roof, it would make sense to do it all at one time, so that we're not then re-lifting the units off.
Some of what we did at high school, we did a re-rooted man at all, new addition that put the units there.
Mr. Greenwood, have you been able to hear all of this?
Yeah, it's amazing, I didn't think I was going to be able to hear all y'all without microphones, but it sounds good. I just wanted to throw in, like you said, you and I are the oldest ones, not oldest, but the longest ones on the board, Ms. Stone's back with us, so. Like you said, it's something that we've had to push down the road all these years, and we've known this stuff is happening. And I was wanting to ask if we could come up with, maybe put something on the, a vote, like a referendum or a bond to help pay for this, or maybe do a loan, a low-interest loan, like they were telling us years back, the auditors, maybe get a low-interest loan to try and get some of this stuff out of the way, because we really need to hit some of this stuff and get it out of the way, we've done it with the courthouse too, we've just been pushing all this stuff down the road, and it's, it's going to hit, like I said, it's, it's getting to the point where everything's going to just give up soon, and we got to do something, we got to find some money somehow, and I just don't know, hopefully some grants. Give up soon and we gotta do something. We gotta find some money somehow and I just don't know, hopefully some grants. Or something else, but I don't know if we could do a bond or or some other way to. Get everybody to vote to, you know, bring something on board.
That's a great question because I've been trying to figure out a way that can follow Mr. Sanders back here so he can. Come up and give us an idea of what those scenarios might look like. So with that, I'll turn it over.
And if I, while he's approaching, do consider, you know, with a referendum, which would be a GO, I mean. King William would be more likely looking at a VPSA or VRA. But in regards to the timing, certain Phase two. Is what is most critical and in in my prior life, sometimes what you did start to touch up with the most critical. Then you look at and every other funding or you have to establish an annual amount or or. By annual amount that you're going to set aside and then you just, you're you're have a continuous improvement of replacement of HVACs and things like that, so.
Okay, before you start, are we going to need the reassessment done before?
Great conversation, Brad. This is, I'm thinking back to the Hamilton project a good number of years ago. And there's nothing special here for you to look at, but in thinking through where the conversation might go, just put together some. Some numbers for you, but I mean, just listening to you, I mean, the. The main thing that we've got to do is figure out what's the timing of these projects in particular that need to fund the fastest. And then how can we layer into, how can we layer into your your capital funding needs going forward? Whether that's funded by cash, whether that's funded by debt, it's going to be some combination probably of the size. To Mr. Greenwood's comment, interest rates are very good right now. I've got a little bit of that we can talk through here as well, but but jump over to the first page. So the first place we start though is what is your, what does your debt look like like? And Mr. Greenwood, I'll give you this page too.
I'm actually, I'm. Sorry, I didn't say it, Steven, right now. You've seen this before anyway, but. The key to this is what does our debt structure look like and in particular, when does it start to drop off? And you can see here that our debt's pretty level, actually pops up a little bit in 2024. And then starts to drop down in 25, significantly drops starting in 30 and 31 and then really ends up in 2038. So my point is, as that starts to drop down, we can then add in other debt obligations going forward. And the key would be to try to impact your your revenue requirements as little as possible. So a lot of what we did with Hamilton was exactly this, where we went through some planning processes to talk to the board. How are you going to fund these projects? What is that additional debt maybe going to look like? When you add it to your existing debt, maybe we've got to come up with some other sources as well to pay for it. The next page, also page two. Is what interest rates look like right now. Rates are very good. Again, referendum, Ms. Stone's correct. A referendum is something that we do use in in some localities. Virginia also has the chief public school authority, which allows local governments to borrow through a state agency, really using the state's credit. And frankly, those interest rates are going to be better than than we could get in the public markets, given the size of a few weeks' county. So that certainly would be what we're looking at. If you look at this graphic here. You're going to see that rates right now are as low as they've ever been. That's for a number of reasons, obviously, going through the pandemic. Cause a lot of that, some actions that drove rates down. But also, these are taxing of interest rates. And right now taxes in local governments are pretty good credits in the market today. So. I gave you some examples in the next few pages of what maybe some borrowing costs would be. I did get a little heads up that Phase two was around $5 million cost. And so what I ran was, you know, not knowing when we're going to do this, when you might do this. I've shown here on page four, 20 year borrowing scenario. So if you were to borrow over a 20 year period, leveled that service. And at varying interest rates and the rates range on the sort of the middle, it's it's 2%. Which frankly, in the markets today, you're going through DPSA, level that service over 20 years, you'd be right around 2% total cost of funds. So that's that's kind of what today's market is. That's a great, great, great rate for 20 years. And then also ratchet up 50 basis points to 2.5% or 3%. There certainly is the expectation that rates are going to rise going forward, when and how much that happens, that's a little uncertainty there obviously, but. He just sensed what the difference here is. $5 million borrowing approximately at 2% today's rates, $315,000 a year. Additional revenue that we've got to come up with and rates would go up 100 basis points, not a big difference, $350,000 a year. In total debt service. I ran on the next page over a 25 year period too. Well, what you got to look at is what are you financing? You don't want to finance HVAC units for 30 years. There are some, essentially there's some root projects in there too that just have a little bit longer life. So what you want to look at is the average life of the asset you're financing and not not do a financing that's too much longer than that. But they did want to run so you can see what the differences are with 25 year amortization. You're paying more interest over a longer period of time. But your annual payments are going to be lower. And so if one of the things we're looking at is cash flow and how we're going to pay for it. Sometimes financing over a little bit longer can be more helpful, in particular in this earlier years before, say, your debt service drops off. But but just sharing, I think one of the things that I would recommend is that we work with the school board to figure out what projects. Really need to fall on the front end. From a timing perspective, and then like we did with Hamilton, come to you. Show you what the impacts of those things might be over different years and and maybe it's a interest only for a little bit of period of time until your debt service drops off. And we could layer it in a little bit that way. Maybe someone could reserve if you built up at the time for capital projects that we could. Could shave off a little bit of that service as well or or lower the costs of some of the projects.
What did you estimate the lifespan of the new year?
Right now, I mean, the market's 15, 15 years.
Yeah, you certainly wouldn't want to finance it for 20, 25 years.
So when you do it, if you're just doing HVAC units, absolutely right. If you're adding in roof repairs in particular, they're going to have a 20 year. Economic life usually, if not longer, then you can maybe go a little bit further, but you're ultimately going to look at what the average economic life of what you finance. Versus the weighted average life of the debt.
Mrs. Longstein, we recall the cost estimate on the two gym rooftop units.
We don't have that for a minute. Um, but I do think if we go through an RFP process, it's going to make the prices more negotiable.
Remember, we went through VPSA before with Hamilton. And VPSA sells bonds twice a year in the spring and the fall. And so if your timing works out. That you're getting your bids and you want to coordinate that a little bit too, we get our bids in, we know how much it's going to cost, then we can go to VPSA in the spring or the fall. There are other ways that we've done borrowings here too, and depending on the length of the of the loan. Once you get out to 20, 25 years, VPSA absolutely is a great way to do it because you can lock in those interest rates. If you're borrowing for some shorter period of time, we have other avenues and ways that we can borrow absent a referendum and a GO bond. For two, where we go to banks and just get proposals from banks and see what their interest rates are and just frankly compare it to see whether it. Is in, at least in close proximity, what maybe VPSA may be. There are some offsetting from timing of when you do that. So those are all our options that you have.
So does King William currently have any BQ outstanding debt or?
I don't know. BQ is a is a way for banks to. Hopefully provide you a little bit lower interest rate if you're borrowing less than $10 million in a calendar year. And frankly, at least lately, because rates are low, we haven't seen there be a big differential between. BQ rates and non-BQ rates. So banks will bid on on loans regardless of whether they're BQ or not. Sometimes you get a little bit of the lower interest rate if you're borrowing less than $10 million in a calendar year. But even in some banks don't don't care whether they're BQ or not.
What would this do to the county's credit rating?
So you don't have a credit rating right now and and a lot of localities in Virginia don't have a credit rating unless you're in the markets a lot, in particular because we do have the ability to access. VPSA and then the Virginia Resources Authority is another state agency that borrows on behalf of local governments. But I don't think, if you did, I don't think you would have a whole lot. It depends on how the timing of these things being layered in. Memory serves me. Your, one of the things we look at is your your debt, your total assessed value in the jurisdiction. Yours is pretty small, I believe. We've done a review back in 2019. On the the total finances of the county and be happy to, if we're members, maybe that's something that we can come back and do. We're happy to do that. So you can get a bigger picture of, you know, what goes into your credit rating. It's your debt outstanding certainly, but it's also your economy of. King William and the economy of Virginia as well, and there's some other factors playing into it. So be happy to do that. Right, I think what we, if we move forward to going with the with the debt service route, we certainly want to examine what our our capacity is. Called it, it was, I know when we did Hamilton calls, it was. More than sufficient. You know, obviously, still even doing $5 million is still a small chunk, even amortized, so. That's certainly something we'd like to get a more properly detailed look at as we move forward, but I think for nice discussion purposes, what we have here. It's exactly what we need. Steven, did you get all those documents I sent over?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to see it on the phone with them. Yeah, I got, I got them.
You have any questions about it?
No, not right now. Like I said, it's hard to see them on this little phone.
I don't remember seeing it there. So they, the presenter is a longtime budget analyst expert and has advised the state before on these issues and several scenarios were drawn out. Obviously, it's it's going to be highly dependent on the mood of the General Assembly once they're, once they're all sworn in and seated and then. You know, obviously, our governor will have a budget. That he puts in, the party opposite him will be in power and will be making the budget. Certainly spending on school construction, school capital needs was one of the things that they discussed. One of the big things that you're probably going to see get thrown around is going to be either tax cuts or tax refunds of some sort is going to be another. Probably a big desire from the incoming majority. You'll probably get a mismatch where nobody gets a whole lot of anything and. And it's all gone by the end of the year. But I know they've got a big, they've got like a super deposit based on the surplus that they are not constitutionally, but statutorily obligated. To make, that's something I order of. $50 million so that they can statutorily just not do, because of the General Assembly. So that's one, one. Kind of unknown is whether or not they'll move forward with making that spring day super deposit or so. Make a move to to not do that and use it for other things. There's obviously a lot of talk about what to do with transportation funding and there's been stated desires to reduce gas tax. And that could affect transportation funding a great deal. They may use some of the surplus funds to cover a reduction in the gas tax. So there were, the presentation was probably 20 or 30 areas that they could do. That he thought were either increasing or decreasing likely depending on. How how things shake out and how things are working out between the new majority and the House and the current majority. Will that be sufficient to fund all of these capital needs though? Definitely not.
And they did talk about this, Brad. That was the first thing I was going to ask, but Dave already hit on. And I knew, but I did not know what the amount.
The portion that King William was a lot, it was a 403,000.
Is that a one-time only grant? It is, so next year, three years.
Unless some of the money's not utilized, correct?
Yes, but we'll find that out sooner than later. They they expected by January that they would reallocate that funding. As, you know, some localities received a lot of money and if they have to have 100% match, they may not have that.
So just a thought, we we know we have that critical need, that's that's around 5 million. And certainly, Davenport could go back and look at the debt ratios and and do all of that calculation. When I look at page two, I see that the. Principal paydown is a little over 2 billion a year. And so. I was trying to quickly find it, but my recollection is if you want to participate in the VPSA, maybe it's a January application. I think it's the month of January that you make application. Then you could put a number out there, but not finalize it until you get closer to the sale and the sale will not be until the spring. So in the meantime, potentially, you know, we could sharpen our cost estimates more, whether that's going to do a big process or what have you. And maybe there's an opportunity to look at that spring VPSA sale to do at least, if not all, some portion of Phase one. If we could pick up Phase two with a grant, we have bought some breathing room. To kind of develop, you know, the the plans for the future phases, whether that's kind of in years three through six or something like that. But I think we have to acknowledge that we probably need to start to at least have Davenport. Develop a timeline and maybe a scenario of what they think would work potentially for. Addressing at least some portion of Phase two. Recognizing that we may be able to pick up, you know, Phase three of that grant.
Is it common to process an RFI on your side of things? Request for information or you're not obligating anything or anybody, but you get hopefully some good business.
Yeah, my experience says it it takes almost as much time. So you're almost like an RFI process is as time consuming as a request for. Plans and things like that. And there's some cost associated. So a firm such as ABM comes in and does soup to nuts. And I'm sure who's standing back there probably wants to like put his hands around my brain or something. But when you want to issue a request for proposal or request for bid, you have to hire engineers to develop the bid for it. Because it has to be very specific. So if you go with a firm such as ABM or something like that, a lot of times smaller localities will do that. Because now you're, it's all put together. When you go out to bid, which is what I prefer to do, but you have to recognize there are certain costs and timing associated with that. You got to hire an engineering firm to put the bid together for you. They, a lot of times have to help you analyze the bid. And that type of thing. So it's it's time consuming and try to do an RFI, it would take us until the spring. To get an RFI, so you obviously need to start working towards a request for bid. But in the meantime, such as in January, you could allow multiple contractors come in and give you some ideas, some high level estimates.
One thing, and this is what I want to interject a little bit, is that if we look at it from a design bid proposal. Companies would come in if we give them access to our facilities. To do an inventory like ABM did and they will give us proposals for the scope that we want to complete. The nice thing about that is once they put in their bid, they are totally. What it is, there are no change orders and the price is the price. So that is another. Way that we may be able to save some money on that because it is a true bid. They are putting the, they are developing the design. Put a bid on that and then we go with the best proposal.
The less risk, sometimes slightly higher price, but you assume less risk. And they're responsible for design through. You know, startups. Or a lot of times when you go out, you've got to first get a design. So you've got to issue an RFP for a design and then you got to hire the the. Engineering firm to develop the request for bid. And so that's why a lot of times medium to smaller localities. Engineering firm to develop the request for bid. And so that's why a lot of times medium to smaller localities take the design. Um, you know, construction approach design bid, just, you know, kind of do it all, take care of all of it for us and it's it's a lot easier.
What is the annual ideal of all? The ABM cost?
What do you, on our current or what we're currently paying for ABM or on the proposal? Current, our current, um, we are currently making two payments of a hundred and twelve thousand a year. Um, as lease payments and then next year our payments go up to two hundred and twenty-three twice a year.
Let's say that again. Two hundred and twelve.
Yeah, two twenty-four currently and then it goes up. And that's what we're we're paying that out of our funding that we receive between appropriations and and funds from the state.
Right. And and ABM report, they they've got the the audit of their performance agreements. Um, what that offset savings was supposed to be versus what it actually is showing actually in in excess savings on that performance agreement, which is how they were financing phase one. About eight thousand. Why phase one didn't, well, no, you were here, um, didn't require, uh. Approval from from us for for any funding or anything like that because it's being funded out what the upgrades are saving them in, um, in these. Well, right, but I think the number that she gave is still below what their, what their yearly cost savings are.
Even mine, um, year one of this, um, the solar field was not up and running. Um, that that solar field had to be, um, condensed because of wetlands. Um, but it is, it did start running, um, in September of twenty twenty.
So that twenty-nine thousand dollars is only a portion of what you would expect. Of course, we. Mr. Greenwood, back to you.
Yeah, I'm okay right now. Just, I don't know.
I just want to make sure that you 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 have the opportunity to speak if you want to. I know sometimes when you're.
All right, all right. Yeah, I know they need the money. I'm I'm just that however, we can try to find out to to get some. That's the problem. And I remember they. They were talking about grades too back when we were years ago, but I guess I just heard him say we don't have grades anymore. I thought we were like an A or B, but. Or AA or something, but I guess that that's not the case anymore.
Never had a credit rating because that's something you have to pay for to get.
Oh, okay.
We've never needed it because we've always been able to do, uh, these types of financings through, um. You know, either, uh, relatively small bank loans. I think we financed the radio system through through a bank loan as opposed to a bond and and then we, for the bond for the schools, we did the the VPSA. Um, we're big debt service items in the last, the last decade or so. And so this one would, I think, again, maybe looking, it would make the most sense if it were to go VPSA if if we're going to, uh, debt service this. Uh, but I think, I think, Stephen, that's kind of where we are is, um. The next step is that we have Davenport, uh, actually run some, you know, granular, granular detail scenarios on on what we're funding and how best to fund it. And what timeframe, uh, we need to be acting to to get this highest priority items, um, taken care of while we work out between our two boards. A way to sustainably fund, uh. You know, ongoing HVAC replacement and repair needs, uh, and how we best do that, either through continued use of reserves or debt financing. Dedicated capital funding out of the general fund, whatever that may be, except for.
Right. And didn't didn't you find out something when you just went to Baker, when there's something brought up that something about funding or something for we could use for schools maybe?
Um, not really. Um, there there's, there's a budget surplus. I think it's about two billion dollars in this current year and they're looking at potential. Eight to ten billion over the next biennium, uh, but TBD on what they're going to do with that. And there's a lot of competing ideas.
Hmm, yeah.
But I I don't think that there's, there's a big, uh, you know, rescue pail of a bucket of money coming our way to solve this problem here in particular.
Did the county receive any ARPA funds for infrastructure type projects or?
Uh, we did, but I think we dedicated a large portion of that to matching our body grant. We've got a body grant that we, Virginia broadband grant.
Okay, thank you.
Because I think we've got about two and a half million dollars for the match. We've got to put towards that. We're using two million in ARPA and then we're using a portion of that fund that we had set aside for broadband years ago. Um, as the rest of that match. So we're hoping that we'll get funding on that and that we will use all of that money to solve a broadband issue. That'll be.
And I think there's still an opportunity for some of those funds to flow down. Some of it's still stuck at the federal level and hasn't made it.
Some of it's still stuck at the state level. I mean, the state hasn't figured out what to do with all their ARPA money either. So, and I I don't know what all is in the infrastructure bill.
Right.
Um, that that has potential to help out with any of this, but, um. That's not going to flow in time to pay for projects or this coming summer.
Maybe that's that's a phase, that's part of the phase four or five or whatever it may be.
I thought we upset you and you left it, huh? Your opinion on how long? I want to give you your opinion on how long.
I think Mr. Stan, he wants to know how long you realistically think that replacement units can last in a real world environment.
Because, I mean, some of it, I mean, it sounds like it'd be April summer or, I mean, spring or summer before anything.
Never mind, that's not what he said. He was asking how long these units that you have are going to last.
Right. Uh, I I was trying to answer that question. I hope not till we get to the project, but I I don't have. We're having failures right now.
I'm not thinking of putting it off. I'm just trying to see.
We do our best to keep them up and running.
What is your absolute worst nightmare contingency plan? Do you even have one? Let's call it catastrophic.
Yeah. I guess we look at outdoor class, me, train, trailers, uh, classroom.
Fire pits and atrium.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that demonstrates the fact that going for that spring VPSA sale, which is probably the first opportunity for it. At least some portion of that.
What are the steps to get computer?
To go through VPSA? So so VPSA requires an application. Um, it requires action by the school board, requires action by the, uh, governing body of the county. Um, I'm authorizing an application to be submitted to VPSA. Once that's submitted to VPSA. You know, they accumulate all of the all of the local governments, they're going to go through it, they approve, uh, the applications. Some called due diligence, just about the school representatives and county representatives as well. Um, how you want to repay it, um, and then it takes some time and then put together all their documents and bonds are typically sold. You know, in mid-April, uh, April, May timeframe, uh, with funds available, say, mid-May or so.
Is there a probability of success of getting that?
It's it's a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I mean, you you apply to VPSA, it's it's your your obligation to them is a general obligation pledge. So the county. Uh, one way that local counties in Virginia asked a couple and issued general obligation bonds was full faith and credit with the county, um, is to go through VPSA and that's considered a, uh, general obligation.
And the approval, the approval is typically just approving a resolution and then the debt.
Questions. Let's make sure. All the steps.
Correct. It may require December action. I'm trying to.
VPSA sends out a, um, an email to all, um, school districts in the Commonwealth. So you probably will get one from VPSA saying, here's our schedule. They put it out, they lay out the schedule for you, when your meeting dates have to take place. Uh, and there's some time, uh, lag in there. Um, that that, once we get the, um, the schedule from VPSA as to when the the due dates are, we can relay that to you and then get your your board meetings, but the school board and the. Uh, or supposedly meet for that to make sure that you have that to deliver. Is there any objection to having Davenport move forward with that step? I I would send it.
We recognize.
Say we're going to try to get some money. Um, I guess the only, uh, I don't have objections, but we're we're obviously going to be tasking our staff with coming up with, uh. Three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which I assume we would not like to be taxing great. So, um.
Just carefully, boy, I I just wanted to warn that I was going to have to move it. I didn't know that eight million right behind it.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. That's what we like, we like to to show you and plan out all of the potential obligations. And again, whether they're all financed or partially financed, we can run some different scenarios so that. You'll see, maybe you borrow and make it up five million now this this coming year, but in two or three years you may have borrowed eight million. And then what does that do to your debt service? And how is your staff going to come up with a way to pay for that too?
Well, and Mr. Hodges, in my prior experience in some cases with VPSA, it's a pretty easy approach to go through. And in some cases, um, what you do is maybe do, for example, a two million every other year. Or a, and and then you have to pull this into smaller pieces, but it's the continuous improvement. And also when you go, but it's time to replace. Those units, like twenty years from now, again, it's another example where it's not all done at the same time. So as opposed to eight million in one year, is it a situation where in Davenport, this is the analysis they will do. They may determine it's not worth it because interest rates are so low right now. Capture as much as you can. Or does it make sense to take this first chunk and then immediately just plan going forward, you're always going to have, you know, a certain amount every other year.
I feel like he did. I think it is. And who knows how.
He goes very much lower.
Right.
But you should.
Yeah, I think I predicted directly to you about three years ago that interest rates were going to start to rise. Yeah, so. We're not, I'm no, I'm no good at predicting it. Small event. Maybe Jake Powell, but I'll let the rest. All right, um, Mr. Lee, we haven't interviewed you tonight. Good evening. But the minister collected Mr. Lee was my assist.
I agree that it would be great for Davenport schools to get together with exactly what the high speed is right now. And then what that ask really is, what that's going to look like at our bio line. Obviously, we've talked a lot about the water tower and that that service coming up, but at least they're two different funding sources.
Or at least. So then again, we we need to keep in mind and and we're going to want to know what our capacity looks like. I guess we do have. Obviously, the breadth of what this capital project is or capital projects that we're looking to finance. So, um. But yeah, I think I think we've got consensus here to move forward with starting to assess those things and getting our options. You got it. We're gonna, okay, great. I was good seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do it as husband, you know. You let you let it run as long as it will run and then suddenly it has to be.
Well, it depends on what environment.
Some of us have.
Yeah, I've seen it. I've seen it. I know. Critical figures back and kick hand down the road.
Yeah.
I don't agree with this, but I I was going to mean, why this school board? But I had John one on that school board say he wished the thing would would just break and then they got it to you. And that's a terrible way to really look at this stuff.
But again, historically, we've just been, a lot of us have been hamstrung in funding agencies, you know, with pressures to to not raise taxes, uh, you know, from one end and then pressures to to try to make those dollars short as far as we can. So here we are. Um, can't look back. You can only go forward. So that, uh, Mr. Chairman, we will work on our side to, uh, work the mental to get, we've got to get done between now and. January to try to get that number as close to realistic as as possible without having official, uh, bid information. And with that, I want to thank you on behalf of our board for entertaining us tonight and having a good conversation. I think this was, uh, very positive. Um, and yes, we need to do a better job, uh. As we move forward, um, with capital needs and making sure that we present everything and we do our CIP projects, uh, budgets every year. So that, uh, everyone knows what we're looking at in the coming years. Without objection, the school board is now adjourned. All right.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Thanks, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving. That's where I was supposed to be.